Highland Park in person and virtual workshop meeting scheduled for today, Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty five at six P M. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council Proton Robinson.
President.
Councilwoman Manica. Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Ashafi. Council President Thomas.
Here, we have a quorum and the meeting can commence. We have two presentations today on our agenda. It's the audit presentation provided to us by Yale and Yale and also a budget presentation provided to us by the illustrious Carl to help give some explanation of the current budget and answer questions. We will have a month before the budget needs to be approved, and I wanted to make sure that we had these questions related to our budget and our finances well out in front of us. I would ask the speakers also, please make yourself available maybe for a potential additional workshop meeting between now and then. At present, we have them scheduled for once a month. I'd like to try and increase that as we get to the end of the school year. So if it's possible that you may be available for us in a week or two to just come back, is that possible? Okay, excellent. So I guess we will start with the audit presentation from Mr. Panter from Yale and Yale. Third floor is yours.
Looks like it's on now.
Push it to get the green button.
Got the green button now.
All right, excellent.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. My name is Alan Panther. I'm a partner at Yo and Yo, and I'm here to present the audit. Panther.
It's right there on the front.
P A N T E R. Yeah, it's right on the, it's all right on the front of my presentation is my name. Yep. The materials that I hope you have, that I hope you received are the audited financial statements. The governance letter, which accompanies the financial statements, I see them right here on your table. So that's very encouraging. So you should, you should have received those materials. The audit was filed back in December as it was required to be filed. So we're here in, in April to present the audit. And I've also distributed a presentation that you see up on the screen as well. So you have these in hard copy. So this is what I'll follow for my presentation this evening.
Will you just hold on for a second? Yep, I'm arriving. Just want to let him get situated. All right, so go ahead.
All right. All right. I'm just introducing myself. I'm Alan Panther, I'm a partner at Yo and Yo, I'm here to present the audit. Hopefully you have the audited financial statements and okay, so the audit went okay this year. We started in October as usual. It seemed like the city was still gathering things we needed through October, through November and into December. And so it was well into December that we received everything that we needed for the audit. The audit was filed on time, though it was admittedly during a time that was scheduled vacation of both mine and my staff, but we got it done. We'd like to thank all the City Hall staff that were available to help us, especially your Finance Director Eleanor Williamson, your contracted accountant Carl Johnson, and your City Administrator Kathy Square. So thank you everyone for all your help and in, in getting through the audit process this year. So one of our responsibilities for auditor, as, as auditors is to look at internal controls, the financial statements and certain aspects of compliance with state statutes. When we go through that process, it often results or can result in, in audit findings and other recommendations that we communicate in writing. So this year we do have three audit findings and also five management letter comments. Management letter comments are more like suggestions or reminders, and I'll touch on those towards the end of my presentation. So if you want to go to the next page of the presentation.
Which page are we on?
The first page after the cover. And you can also, well, it's over your shoulder. This first, I'm sorry.
Oh, this one, okay. Okay, perfect.
Everybody on the right page, the presentation, all right. The first slide deals with the, with the independent auditors report. The purpose of an audit is to give you an opinion on your financial statements, not to detect fraud and not to give assurance and internal control. So it's a very important concept about what it is that we're here to do. We're here to give you an opinion on your financial statements, which is what you see referenced here. We're giving what's called an unmodified or clean opinion that is the best opinion you can get. And it means a couple of things. It means first of all, the statements are formatted in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So in other words, everything that's supposed to be in the statements is there. And also based on the procedures that we perform, the numbers are good. So unmodified opinion is definitely what you want to see. Okay. All right, I have a couple of graphs that I want to give you. These are very high level overviews of the city's finances. I understand that you receive regular communications from your finance department. I want to give you just a very high level of the general fund. So if you could advance the slide, who's ever doing that? Graph, okay, I have two graphs here. So this is a five-year graph with a general fund, and this shows revenues, expenditures, and the fund balance. So the revenues are the blue bar, the expenditures are the orange, and then the fund balance is the orange line that you see running through there. You can see that twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, all pretty similar. The, the revenues and expenditures are all in a pretty narrow range there. The fund balance went, went down a little bit in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and went up a little bit in twenty-two. It went down a little bit in twenty-three. And you can see in twenty-four, it went up, but you can also see that those bars are way higher. And there's, there's one pretty simple reason for that. This, this, the city received Protecting Michigan's Pension Grant this year, about twenty million dollars that the state granted to the city for its three pension funds. So the city has three defined benefit pension funds that the state contributed about twenty million dollars towards. So the way the state required that to be recorded was a revenue in the general fund and an expenditure in the general fund, even though there was never any cash seen. So so that's what happened there. So that's about twenty million dollars that the city got from the state towards those retirement funds. So that's why you see that there. On the next page, this deals with the water and sewer fund. And you guys have been through an awful lot with your water sewer fund, and I'm not here to open up a can of worms with all that. Litigation's passed, over with, done. You guys are moving forward, and that's great. What I want to do with this is point out a little bit of the history of this fund and kind of how that feeds into where it is now. And you guys are going to take it from here. I understand you have an independent consultant who is setting rates and all those kinds of things, but I just want to kind of give you an idea of now that we're on the other side of all this, kind of what it's done to this fund and, and kind of these long-term trends that you see here. So there's a lot going on in this graph, so I'll kind of walk you through it a little bit. There's five things here. You can see the revenues are blue. The expenses are red, I'll say. And there's two lines. There's the unrestricted net position, so that's basically your fund balance. And then there's the net investment in capital assets. So that's basically your water system, your sewer system, minus debt, minus depreciation. So that's basically the asset that you guys have to provide those services with. Okay?
That's pretty high.
Yeah, yeah, it is. That's a great observation. So you can see that there's a lot of things going on here. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, you can see the revenues were way up. Those were grant funds that came in from the state. But you could also see kind of revenues in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. They're down because they don't contain those grant revenues. Yep, and the expenses are up. So it's costing the city more to run the water and sewer system really than it ever has before. And I don't think that's going to be a surprise to anybody in this room, is that it's costing more to provide those services on a go-forward basis. So that's going to be the challenge is setting rates, collecting those bills, that sort of thing, to even that out, you know, to get those, keep those expenses as low as you can. A lot of that's not under the city's control. But, you know, you're going to have to do the best you can with it. As far as the, the fund balances here, I'll start with the good news, and that's the, the orange line here. That's the investment in capital assets. You can see that that has gone up. And the reason that's gone up is because the city has continued to invest in those systems. Okay, making capital improvements. So I know you're replacing water lines, sewer lines. You guys are, you know, putting money into those systems, and it shows here in this line. So that's good. The fact that it's it's trending up and then also how high it is over the zero line too, that's important. So that's, so that line looks actually very good. So that's, that's a, that's, that's a positive. On the, on the other side of that coin though is the fund balance. You can see that, that, that kind of tan line, and you can see that it dipped down below zero. And so now the city's sitting at about a six million dollar deficit of unrestricted funds. So that's, that's going to be a problem going forward. So that's, that's going to be kind of what you guys have to focus on in terms of, you know, setting rates and all of those sorts of things in that fund. So definitely, you know, have your work cut out for you. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody in this group. Okay. That's all I have there. And then the last thing I have is the governance letter. Just wanted to talk about this letter, which is distributed with the audit. This is a required communication. We issue it with every audit, and it's addressed to management and the City Council. Most of the letter is a form letter, but it does and can communicate several important issues related to the audit. Letter discloses any estimates used in preparing the financial statements. Any new accounting standards, has some informational items, discusses any difficulties or disagreements we had with management, which we had none. Any missed, missed statements we noted, which there was one significant misstatement that we noted. And if we had any internal control findings or management comments, those would also be in the letter. So I'll talk about those. The letter also, it says, one of the bullet points here is sensitive note disclosure Gleewood litigation. There is a note in the financial statements that talks about the, the status of the Gleewood litigation and that as of the date of the financial statements, it was closed. So that is discussed in the financial statements there. So it doesn't say much more than that, but it's, it does note that that litigation is over. We do have what we call three material weaknesses this year. A material weakness is a significant issue in internal control that is required to be communicated to the City Council in writing. The three issues are really two. One of the, one of the, two of the issues come from the same thing, and then the other one is, is separate. So the first and the third item are related, and they're related to that pension grant that the city received. There's two things with that. First of all, it was not recorded by the city until they were prompted by us to record it. And also, based on the fact that it wasn't recorded, there was no budget for it. So the city should have budgeted for that expenditure as well as recorded it in the general ledger. So those, that's two of the issues right there. The third issue has to do with federal revenue. So there was, we just completed the process of what we call an, an alternative examination for ARPA, so that the American Rescue Plan funds that were expended by the city. The city did expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards this year, and that was not identified by the city. It was identified by us, and it was identified by us in about November. So that should have taken place much earlier in the process. That should have been identified upfront, and we should have, we should have known about that before we saw it. So, but in the end, it got done, was just recently completed, and, and it's all set, but those, those issues are there. The last page deals with management letter comments, and I don't know how much you want me to go into this, because all five of these comments have been here for three years now. So I can go through them. You've heard all of this before. Okay, so there's five management letter comments, and these are, again, these are not material enough or significant enough that I would discuss them with the audit findings that we talked about just a second ago. These are more suggestions for improvement, things that really should be cleaned up, things like that. So there's five issues. The first is an annuity contract. There is an annuity contract that is on the books of the city as a revenue, or not a revenue, an asset and a liability. Nobody knows who the annuitant is or where the contract came from. We recommend that someone research that and determine the disposition of that annuity contract.
Mr. Boss, could you make a note of that, please?
The second one has to do with pension plan trusts. So as I mentioned before, the city has three defined benefit pension plans. All of those trusts, all three of those trusts are basically being held in cash. That, it shouldn't be that way. Those funds should be invested. There's guidelines out there as far as what could be invested in, all that sort of thing. But those funds should be invested so that the city can realize the benefits of those investment returns on their, on the, on the, on those pension funds. So that is something that is in, in my view, a significant issue in terms of those pension funds, because the city is not taking advantage of those of those investment returns that are available to reduce that liability to the city.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an obligation? So this would be taking someone's pension fund and essentially taking it to the market, Vegas or whatever. Is there an obligation of the levels of control, the limits of using those funds? Because even with the best of intentions, the investments that you make, you have to be prepared to lose. And in this case, this is someone's pension.
Yep.
So are there controls in place if there was some investment that was initiated?
So what the city is allowed to invest in from a pension standpoint is broader. So you are allowed, or the city is allowed to invest in a much broader
A fund.
A lot more things, that you can buy stocks and mutual funds and bonds and all kinds of things. But it's also based on risk tolerance. Okay, so what I see right now is cash. That means you have zero risk tolerance. You're, you're, basically what that's telling me is, you know, we're not going to lose this money. We're not going to gain anything, but we're not going to lose anything.
We have a trauma response around here.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, so, but I think that there's a way that that could be, you know, even if your risk tolerance is low, you could invest in treasuries. You can invest in, you know, government guaranteed obligations, and you could at least make that interest rate, you know, that would benefit your plan. So, and you're talking about millions of dollars, plus being the money that the state gave you guys. The state gave you guys twenty million dollars, and that's, to my knowledge, sitting there in cash. So it should, it should really be invested to, to kind of responsibly steward that money. Yes, sir.
Mr. Ashafi, the floor is yours.
Would that be your, your recommendation? What would you recommend?
I recommend that you guys put together a committee and decide what you're going to do with that money based on your tolerance for risk. I'm not suggesting that you guys invest in anything that's risky or anything like that, but you, you can only go up from here because you're, you're getting zero on your money, you know. You might be getting savings account deposits.
So would that be something that the administration would do? And then brings approval to council, or what would you suggest?
Well, so my job as auditor is not to make operational decisions. So somebody at the city should, should figure that out. I would assume it would be then approved by council. I would assume that was the process, but, you know, that's not really my place to say.
Okay.
I'm looking at a governance letter from twenty twenty-two, and it says the exact same thing.
Yep.
As far as communication of internal controls. Can you explain that?
Can I explain what? That it's been there for three years?
Yeah, and it's the same.
Yeah.
So it's the same concern.
Yeah, we've, we've communicated it multiple times, and nothing's happened.
So by nothing being done and nothing happened, how can
We'll just repeat.
Your job efficiently?
Oh, well, like I said at the beginning, a management letter comment is a, is a suggestion for improvement. It's not anything that affects our opinion. The money is there. We can see it. We can audit it. The city's not doing anything illegal. It's really just a suggestion for improvement.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, so that means that if it's been there for three years, that means for two years and what, four months under us, it hasn't budged. Nothing's been done.
Well, I think his point was, as a consultant, he's making an observation. It's, it's required by the executive of the corporation and the executive staff with, if they have the bandwidth to move in that direction. This is just an observation. You have said amount of cash, you'd probably be as a municipal nonprofit, as a company, you'd be better off making an investment. The question is, with the crisis that we've been managing, who has had the bandwidth? This is heavy lifting of the unimaginable kind, because it's people's pension fund. So any we're safe as cash, as he mentioned, our risk tolerance is low. We're safe as cash, because it's people's pension, and we don't want to play with it. It is a heavy lift to be able to decide the disposition of millions of dollars of funds. I don't have that expertise. I don't know if anybody among us has that expertise, and you would have, you would need to have, we haven't been able to hire consultants. We would need to have the bandwidth, bring in someone with the capacity, a fund manager, something like that, to be able to do so. And that, those are the positions that family houses with large amounts of money, they hire somebody whose only job is to go out and look for opportunities. And as the gentleman said before, they decide, am I risk averse, or do I, am I feeling lucky? So.
So, 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 Council President, so you actually, you answered my question that I asked earlier about this being an administrative issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's, we don't, we have the ability to, if they brought an option to us, we can review that option and say, you know what? I feel comfortable enough with this. I'm gonna say yes, or I'm gonna take a chance. But something will have to be brought to us to say, we're decided, we have decided to do X with those funds. And we have had, for the last twenty-eight months, we have had a lot going on. And that's not the type of, that's not the time that you make that type of decision. Again, you can get wiped out very easily. You know, I wish we had bought Bitcoin when it was, you know, thirty-five bucks a piece. But that would, again, I would have taken the reading of the white paper a long time ago. Which is, again, beyond my capacity. I can't speak for anybody else.
Thanks, that was a great explanation.
Thank you. Madam Proton, you had a question?
On page three dash three.
Of the audit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking at economic factors and next year's budgets.
Okay, great.
I'm reading something regarding COVID nineteen pandemic. You said it had a significant financial impact on the city in the past couple of years. Can you explain that?
No. That part of the document is called management's discussion and analysis. That is management's discussion. That's not my discussion. I didn't say anything. So that portion, you can, you can ask, you can ask Carl about that.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's management's words, not mine.
Yes, go ahead.
I got two more.
Yeah.
Here, yep. Property tax disbursement. So we tested property tax dispersments, and state law requires that when property taxes are collected, they get remitted to the various taxing agencies within ten days of collection, and we've, we've found that that was not being done the last couple of years. So we'd like to suggest that that gets cleaned up. And also, the last one is, the state requires, if you're accepting credit card payments, which I am under the impression that the city is accepting credit card payments for certain things, the state requires a policy to be adopted. So that's a state law that is not being followed. So there is a policy that's required. It's a pretty simple policy. There's a lot of governments out there that have a policy like that. It would have to be approved by council. But that's our suggestion is that the city adopts a credit card policy in accordance with state law.
Who would? Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Boss, is it possible for us to take care of that?
Yes.
Because we're required by state law to do it. If you can lead us, if, if you find this way, tell us about the next council meeting. That would be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can you explain, sorry, four dash twenty-two? The fund deficit?
So there are, there are a couple of funds that have deficits. That means that the liabilities in the fund exceed the assets. So those are those are, that's, that's again a violation of state law, and it needs to be, there's a deficit elimination plan that needs to be filed, probably already has been done with that. Oh, those are grant funds, okay. Does it say, does it say down there whether or not a D E P was required? We usually say that.
He said D E P.
Deficit, deficit elimination. Okay, so if that's what it says right there.
So it's not required for us?
Right, okay.
It's a timing issue for rights. That's all that.
I tell you, Carl, it's good to see you, man. What you did? What you mean, we don't want you here? We miss you. All right, all right.
That's, so that would conclude the presentation. So members of council, Mr. Panther is here. For us, your timing is impeccable. So we have enough, a couple of minutes for questions. I know you answered questions during the session on, I'm sorry, unless there are additional questions from members.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so this will be the time for you to.
I have one more question. Page five-five. There's no mention of the Protective Michigan Grant. Why is that?
No, well, no, it wouldn't mention that, because what those are is historical tables that show what was the liability and the assets that were against it. But it does show in there, you can see that there were contributions by the city. I know, I know, it's, it's hard to read. But you can see, especially the third one, the five-eleven, I believe, is the page you said. If you look on page five-eleven, you can see that there's employer contributions there. I believe it's about seventeen million dollars, eighteen million, something like that. Nineteen-two. Okay, so that's where most of the money went, and you can see that going in there.
At five-eleven?
I believe so.
Yeah, you see that nineteen million dollars?
Yeah.
Is, is an employer contribution.
Okay.
So it doesn't, the number is there. You can see the money going in. But no, there's no, there's no discussion. This is just a table of that.
Additional questions for the gentleman? Well, Mr. Panther, thank you so much for your time. It was a pleasure seeing you in person as opposed to online. If, in, in the future, there are questions, your email is attached somewhere here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would encourage members to email Mr. Panther directly. If you have specific questions that you want him to address, you don't really need to have him come back to an additional workshop if you have specific questions that he can ask before the approval of the budget. I think that will be the shortest course, and you will get your answer directly and as promptly as he can provide it without the trouble of coming.
Yeah, happy to do it.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, have a good rest of your meeting.
Okay, moving on to the budget presentation. Our man Carl is here. Carl, the rest of the meeting belongs to you.
It's not like four hours, so I'm very, very disappointed. But
We're speed dating.
You know, I speak fast. So again, thanks very much. I love the fact that we're having a workshop, you know, to answer questions and, you know, it's my job, our job as finances, to educate you as to what the mayor's proposed budget includes and answer any questions you might have, and ultimately get you comfortable enough to adopt it before the new fiscal year starts on July one. So in overview, before we get into any of the details or whatever, just, it's very important to remember the process. So a normal budget process is, we ask the department that's what they like, which we do. We compile all that information, and we put in the budgets, the mayor's proposed budget, which is before you, has their recommendations. Has their recommendations, but they're adjusted for what we can actually afford. So believe it or not, every department that we asked, you know, what they would like, the requests were only three, four, five million dollars greater than what we can afford. Uh, what this budget is based on and has been based on for many, many years is what we can afford. So if you look at this, overall, our general operating fund, the revenues went up about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from last year. So all in, we know what inflation has done to everything else. We know how much healthcare has gone up, et cetera. Are all, overall, our revenues went up about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So just knowing that, there isn't a lot of extra money for additional items. You know, the capital needs that we have and all of that kind of good stuff. There just isn't extra money for that. In addition to that, we had, uh, police and fire contracts that were settled that did include increases to wages for them. It's to the tune of a couple hundred thousand. I think both budgets went up, uh, more than a couple hundred thousand in both police and fire in those two areas. The good news overall is that, I don't, if you remember from last year, I said that protecting pensions grant that we were gonna get, it was going to impact, number one, the amount of mills that we have to put on the tax rolls that we have to charge our residents. And number two, the city's contribution. So let me back up just a little. The contributions, the actuaries each year, based on the amount of money we have set aside in reserves, they say in order to keep your pension funds solid, you have to contribute a fixed amount. In addition to that, the state required if your pension funds weren't sixty percent funded, you had to kick in more in order to get them sixty percent funded in a thirty year span. So in our general fund, there was two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of extra contributions that had to be made to the pension system over and above what was already on your tax rolls. So that we can meet that obligation. Well, that protecting Michigan grant that we got, the twenty plus million dollars between the three pension systems, made it so that the general fund does not have to kick in any additional monies related to that. And you will see a substantial increase in the mileage rates that come this December for the pensions. So again, two very, very good things. So what did we do with that extra two hundred and forty thousand dollars? Well, as part of our budget process, we had substantial needs as far as, uh, capital. So there was a request for a new fire truck, which only cost a million or million one. There's, uh, the police and fire need vehicles, all of those types of things. We literally had two million dollars worth of capital requests. So what we've done, again, trying to be fiscally prudent, knowing that when that fire truck is up and we need it four years from now, three years from now, we're not gonna have a million dollars. We created a new fund called the Capital Improvement Fund. And that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand that we were paying in pension, we're immediately kicking into this capital fund to set aside so that we can start purchasing capital as it becomes neat, as it's needed. So ideally, again, that fire truck obviously is a big number, and so two fifty over the next four years, that gets us our million dollars to pay for it if nothing else comes up before then. If you don't have any additional monies to put in it, et cetera. So that is a big piece of it. Again, that we're able to set that money aside and still have a balanced budget. Well, what that literally leaves us is not a whole lot of room. So when you look at this, you pretty much see last year's budgets, most departments, if they have employees, the healthcare piece is up a little bit. You know, I think it's eight, nine percent is the assumption that healthcare costs went up. Um, again, wages across the board, only if they were, um, in the union contract, were they included in there as an increase. And we, our lawsuits against us, if you recall last year, I think in the budget, there was a couple hundred thousand, those are gone. So again, that, that decrease was used to offset those additional cost increase, et cetera. So what you have before you for the general operating fund is a balanced budget, i.e. our revenues that we have equal the expenses we have. And again, I think I highlighted the, the main pieces as far as what changed, you know, between last year and this year. So again, I, I think Kathy even made the comment of, this is one of the best budgets we've had in a while because literally there's that two hundred and forty thousand dollar, for lack of a better word, uh, surplus that we're able to set aside and start addressing some of our capital needs. So to me, that's a, it's a great accomplishment that we're able to do that. Um, and obviously, you know, it's something that the spending of that will ultimately come before you again on how, how that gets spent.
I have a question for you. I don't mean to interrupt your flow. So we are a landlord, we are a large property owner within the city.
Yes.
In your, I'm asking for your opinion. The, do we have, how significant is the burden of caring for all of this property, this vacant property that's.
Well, it's, it's not just you guys, it's city owned property itself. The maintenance of it is the killer in the summers. You know, the, the brass cutting and the lack of it being on the tax rolls. I mean, those are the, the big negatives related to that. You know, vacant land is not worth a whole lot, but it's still, if somebody else owns it, it's somebody else's to maintain.
Got you.
That's, that's the biggest piece for us. So we, we don't have enough DPW guys to cut all of the vacant lots and the equipment to do it, you know, et cetera. We'd have to double or triple our staff to, to really be on top of it. And, and that's the, that's the, the cost of holding it.
We have thousands of parcels.
Right, exactly, exactly. I remember ten, fifteen years when I was here, a third of the city was owned by the city, which was a crazy number. I know we're not anywhere near that now, but at, you know, in its peak, it was very bad. You know, the city through tax reverses and everything else, it was, it was really bad. So it's still a substantial number too.
So we play a role in the disposition of property. So we could, in fact, reduce the burden of the city by moving some of this property off of our books and into private hands.
Correct. The other part I forgot too is we pay about three hundred and forty thousand annually in stormwater runoff on those properties. So in the general fund, there's about three hundred and forty thousand of water, stormwater charges on city owned properties that we have to pay as well.
I, I literally feel your pain.
Pay it to ourselves.
Yeah, listen, I literally feel your pain.
Yeah.
You, you know, um, you, you know, I'm always the concept, I'm always trying to understand that. How do we tax ourselves?
Well, the, the, yeah.
If we own something, how is there a bill for what we own outright as the city? You know, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not understanding that, that concept. And you, you know, I own property.
Sure.
You know, I, I, I don't, I don't pay myself, but I do pay, pay Wayne County. So how is it that, that the city owns the property, it's ours, but yet there's a bill associated with that property?
Carrying costs, I'm afraid.
Sure, well, here, here's, stormwater is a unique animal. And, and again, that's the, the primary, that's the largest piece we pack. So the, the issue there is that the water in, within our water sewerage, there's stormwater charges. There are charges that we pay for the rainwater that comes off everybody's property and paved roads and everything else goes into the system. Uh, the rules are, if you recall, the Water and Sewer Fund is a legally restricted fund that we can only charge what it costs us. And we charge all of the users of the system. So the users of the system is, in the stormwater case, is anybody who has any land in the entire city. They are subject to the stormwater cost.
Okay.
And so if we didn't charge ourselves, ourselves being, and you get, you gotta think of the general fund as a separate company than the Water and Sewer Fund, two totally separate companies. So the general fund as a company has vacant land, which has runoff, which the Water and Sewer Fund must treat and process. And therefore, they must get charged. If we did not charge the general fund, we'd still have to pay that three hundred thousand in the system. And we would have to charge all the other residents that fee.
Okay, well, it sounds like, it, it, it sounds like to me, and, 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 and please, if anybody feel through, appreciate the time here, since we get our money from the residents, then we, that that charge is being distributed evenly across the residents that do pay.
The residents and the cities and the commercial, anybody who has land, it's distributed evenly.
But again, the, the city is the city, and if the city has the bill, the residents are paying.
Well, no, either federal fund paying that, which they're legally required to, it actually reduces the amount we would have to charge our residents.
Okay, so look here.
It's just two buckets, two buckets of money that we require to do.
Okay, so, so I wanna, I wanna, um, I wanna backtrack on something and what you said. Uh, just a few minutes ago, you, you said that you reached out to every department to see what they need, correct? I don't recall anybody reaching out to council to see what council needs.
Uh, again, Eleanor sent out a request to everybody, I'm not sure.
Okay, I saw no emails.
All right.
I saw no emails about what council needed. Now, the only thing that I saw from the mayor was she said that if we wanted something, to submit that to Ms. Eleanor. But no emails came from Ms. Eleanor, or nobody reached out to this council about what we need to do the jobs that we're required to do, you know what I'm saying? I noticed that a budget was created for this council without council's input, and I'm curious as to why that is.
If, if I, if I may, the, the mayor did let us know, we've been doing this for twenty eight months. The mayor let us know almost a year, almost a year and a half ago, that she would, that we could only communicate with departments through her. I have made inquiries and I was told politely, you need to check with the, it was just a simple question. You need to check with the mayor first and to, to. The point is, did we spend all of our budget? Did city council spend all of the budget that was allocated to them last year? That's a, we did not.
Okay.
We did not. Okay.
So.
The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, so, council president. You actually kinda, kinda made my point. Okay, nobody reached out to this council to see what it would need, if it would need anything.
I don't know, we're a separate, we're a separate body. We are, we are budgeted.
But again, again, we are getting into, we are getting into this area where I've never known, up until this council, up until this council, it's something special about this council here, that we have to go through the mayor to talk to department heads.
No, sir.
About issues in the city. I don't recall that.
No, 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 sir. Previous mayor was iron plaid about him.
Recall that being the issue for Rodney Patrick and him. I don't recall it being the issue for Norma Lewis. I don't recall any other administration.
But I disagree. Mr. Yacht, rest in peace. Mr. Yacht was very firm. If those of you who recall, he was very firm about, and you used to work with him. Mr. Yacht was very firm about him being.
Exactly, so.
And this is not a disrespect, him being the goddamn mayor. He was very clear, and people had to go through him in order to interface with his staff.
And you're absolutely correct. I used to work with Mayor Yacht, and I'm telling you that that's not true. Okay, Rodney Patrick and him were allowed to speak to whatever department head they need to speak to in the time in which they need to speak to him. This was not the issue, uh, to this particular council. And every time that we ask for something, or we request something, we hit a brick wall, a stall tactic.
I think that what we should do.
Or something never comes to this council, and then people expect.
So let's talk about solutions because in Robert's rule, we have to be mindful of grandstanding. Yes, sir, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm not grandstanding.
No, no, okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
I don't disagree with you.
That, uh, that, that you're asking us to vote on something, and you're asking us to do this and do that for you, but yet, yet this council has not received the information that it needs to make an informed decision. Even with this particular budget, I noticed that this entire budget is based on expenditures. I don't see anything in this budget about what the city brought in.
So, yes, page one and two.
So, so.
Page one and two.
Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me focus here on, and say this. Let me, let me just, let me just be clear about as we're in the framework of the budget. I don't personally recall at any time during my tenure, last twenty eight months, that if there was something that I wanted to address, that the city was required to provide for me. That would be SIMCOG training, that would be Michigan Municipal League classes, that would be literature to pass out to citizens across the city. I don't recall any instance where I, I did not feel as if I could reach out to the administration to get those needs met. I have called.
For you, council president.
No, no, I'm sitting on, I have, I have the same rules that city council had. I can't go on the mayor's side without.
There, there, there is a courtesy, which you being council president, extended to you.
Okay, if you feel that way, if, if you feel that way, I can't argue it because I don't know what your experience. I'm on, I'm on the defer to Madam Protem, she's had her hand up.
Well, let me, just before this is done. So the purpose of this, and again, the, the, the reason I'm glad we're having the workshop is, so again, mayor's proposed budget to you. And again, the, the, if there wasn't communication, this is still your opportunity.
Exactly.
To adjust, to make amendments to the mayor's budget. So as an example, if you, as a body said, I would like to add five thousand dollars to the mayor council, or the council budget for X. And you voted for it and said, yes, I'm voting for this, plus add five thousand dollars for that, this is your opportunity. So your amendment, your approval of this a month from now can be, I approve this, or I need to add five thousand dollars, or between now and the next meeting, forward your requests here, and the mayor will have the opportunity to incorporate it on. Even if she doesn't include those, you, this is your opportunity, mayor's proposed to the governing body for ultimate approval. You can, you can propose adjustments to it and pass with adjustments.
Okay, okay, Carl, and we made, have we sat down and took a good look at this budget and thought about ways that we.
Hold on one second. No, no disrespect. Madam Protem has had her arm up so long.
I'm so sorry, Madam Protem. Please, I'll wait.
To piggyback off of everything that she's saying, as far as getting any kind of information to help us to make an informed decision, we have not received anything as far as the grants, where they came from, what they were used for.
Hey, Miss Man.
I had to file FOIA request. As a matter of fact, Friday, I left a deposit.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and twenty five dollars deposit to get this information, solve that request and form a decision. And I had to do that through FOIA request, and I'm city council pro temp. And I need to know, before we do anything, go anywhere, what's going on with the internal control? Do we have internal control?
Yes.
So why we haven't gotten a copy of it? Because we asked about that to you as a matter of fact.
Several times.
Several times.
The auditors, when they do their audit, they test the internal controls. They have formal documentation of what the internal controls are. They sat down with us, they documented it in their work papers, and to the extent they feel we don't have controls or they're lacking, that's what you have in there. So the only control they determined was lacking was the credit card policy. Outside of that, the other controls that, so they would have looked at cash receipts, cash disbursement, budgeting process, any of the internal controls of the city, they are legally required.
So these internal controls are verbal.
Well.
Because I've seen it in writing.
Yeah, I, that's, yes, we.
So they're verbal internal controls.
Well, they.
They're going off of your word.
We tell them what they are, and then they are, the auditors are legally.
Tell them what they are.
So the auditors, they come to us as part of their audit, they're legally required under the auditing standards to gain an understanding of our internal controls and then to test them.
That we don't have.
No, we do.
Right, just verbal.
Right, they may not, I, at one point, they were in writing, but I, there's no master listing of all the internal controls because treasury should have their own internal controls, cash disbursement should have internal controls, finance has internal controls on whatever process they do.
So we do not.
There, there are internal controls. I can't tell you if there, I know the auditors have written.
We asked them several times.
Again, I, I don't.
You don't what?
You've asked Eleanor, I don't.
We've asked you here.
I, I know, but I don't have the internal controls.
So you can't get them for us because we asked you for them and you said we're gonna get them for us.
I remember that.
Yeah, and again, I, I don't, I, I don't recall specifically saying I would provide them, but I can go look to see exactly what we have.
Could you give us an example? Because there's some discourse on this. Give me an example of an internal control. Uh, I, I have a, a fee to pay. I own a building. So I come in and I pay you a hundred and twenty dollars a fee that I have for registering this property. Then what happens to that money once you receive it?
So the internal control in the treasurer's office is, someone comes to the window and pays cash or check or credit card for a transaction. The transaction is rung up in the register, it's assigned an account number, et cetera. Um, at the end of the day, the, there's a formal report run that cashes out the day's activity. So it says we collected five thousand dollars for the day and provides a list of everything that was collected. At the end of the day, that report is taken with all the cash and deposit tickets are made to deposit it in the water fund or the general fund or whatever fund the, the, the money belongs in. And then that money is taken to the bank. So on the treasury side, that is the internal controls related to it. So someone independent of the person who's ringing it up in the cash register is the one that should be reviewing the daily report and preparing the cash receipts and deposits to the bank. The deposits at the bank are then reconciled by someone independent, the finance department, when they do their monthly bank reconciliations to ensure that the report said five hundred went to five thousand, went to the bank, that five thousand actually went to the bank. And then to the extent there's not, there should be controls in place to follow up on any differences and those kind of things. So that's, those are the internal controls that we do have, that we are following. And again, to the extent a written copy can't be performed, I, I know the auditors, we could literally request from the auditors all of their internal controls because they legally had to document them and then test them every single year.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to my, to my colleagues here, but that's exactly what we had to do at a shoe store. When I worked at a shoe store, we had inventory, we had to ring up the receipts. We, so it hasn't changed, it's still finance one on one. Madam Protem, Mr. Shafi, in that order, please, take whatever time you need.
Who's our fiduciary at this moment since Danny did that?
You have a treasurer, I believe.
What do you mean when you have a treasurer?
Do we?
You, one was elected, wasn't it? Again, I'm just the finance guy. I, I heard there was an election and somebody won.
So you don't know?
Again, I'm not.
You don't know?
You have a treasurer, right?
You don't know?
You have an elected treasurer. Yes, I do know. You have an elected treasurer.
You don't know?
I do know.
Yes. His answer is, his answer is, matter of fact, it's the fiduciary treasurer. Yes, this man with all due respect.
Please, sir, I'm not talking to you.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I've been asking for so much stuff, can you get me a copy of the COVID nineteen funds that were dispersed to the city of Hightower? Is, is that your friend?
What does that mean?
What do you mean, what does it mean? Do we get any grant money from COVID?
We got a million dollars, which was used for public safety payment.
Public safety what?
Payroll. It was just used to pay payroll. And that's when the auditor described the audit of federal funds. So they did an audit of those funds to make sure they were paid according, spent according to the ARPA rules. And they found no exceptions.
So would you know who the annuity contract?
Yeah, again, he, he didn't quite say exactly what's going on there. We know exactly who the annuity contract is. The auditors say it should be in the city's name as a beneficiary. And I don't believe it is. So I know there's been follow up over the last couple of years on it, as well, all of those five items, there was, has been follow up. So we know exactly the social security issue that's been there twenty years. We called the IRS numerous times. We can't get any, any response from them. We, it's not like we've ignored those. We've addressed every single one of them.
So you're saying that the city is the annuity contract?
We have the annuity contract and the city is the beneficiary. That's why it's on our books. We know exactly how much it is. We get a quarterly statement on the policy.
Did we balance our budget last year?
Absolutely, yes. Not only did we balance it, I believe we had a surplus.
You said a hundred and fifty thousand dollars surplus?
Well, the, this is the current budget that we're proposing right here. Last year's general fund.
Mr. Shafi, I'll let you close this out. Oh, and Miss Martin as well. I mean, we, we can squeeze it in. We got like four minutes here. Let's try to squeeze it in.
Yeah, last year, uh, fund balance was increased by more than a million dollars.
Miss Martin, you had a question?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, um, I'm just gonna fire some questions. Who manages DPW's budget?
That would be Metro, based on the.
Got it. Okay, got that. Okay, and then?
No, I'm sorry. There is our DPW director. My name's Sam. He's screwing around with water versus that. We, we have a DPW director.
Which was Carla, right? Somebody new?
Again, I.
Okay, so going back, going to, uh, city council's budget. Um, you were saying that this is the time to discuss whatever changes we want to amend, right?
That's correct. Oh, well, so tonight's is getting an education of any questions you might have. Again, as, um, as the council president noted, hopefully this isn't the last time we talk here.
Yeah, no, I'm sitting aside sometime. I have at least another.
We'll do it this again, you say?
Oh, yeah, we're going, because, because if you guys, not, not that he's mentioned the fact that it was never an issue, but now that it's been raised that you have an opportunity still as city council to submit, submit a request. They've already told us that our money is thin, but we didn't use all the money we had last time. That doesn't mean you can't have projects within the city right now. If you're talking about a nominal amount, I'm sure that could be added to the budget and we just have to, we'd have to manage. But it'd have to be a reasonable, it'd have to be a reasonable request, it'd have to be the amount that we could afford and we'd have to be able to justify it. Just like everything else that's in the budget right now, it has to be justified uh, based on the individual need and the expenditures of the, of the citizens' tax dollars.
So as an example, the council budget currently in this fiscal year is one oh seven nine fifty. The proposed budget in here is one eleven three hundred. So it's up and that's primarily because of the healthcare fringe benefit costs. Or outside of that, everything else was budgeted exactly the way it was the previous year.
I'm looking at district two. It says that sixteen hundred was spent, there were sixteen hundred. And then there was twenty three, twenty four, there was one thousand nine hundred and eighty one dollars.
Yep.
I don't even know with the sixteen hundred, what that was or what that was spent on.
So you'd have to reach out to Eleanor. There's, there's, we could run your details.
You know, every time I reach out to Eleanor, she is too busy.
So let me ask you, it was, let me just make sure I'm understanding. There are expenditures in your district. There are expenditures in your district in this budget. You didn't have any expenditures at all. You, you can't account.
There are expenditures in both our districts.
I don't know.
Was that for those dumpsters?
What happened?
So let's, so let's, I, I, I'll ask, I'll ask Eleanor, I'll send an email out. There, there are probably. We, there's no, we. Yeah, so we can't, so if you didn't submit them, that might have been something that was done for the, for the cleanups. Those dumpsters that went in those areas, all of that funding had to be allocated. I know there was, there were dumpsters in district one, those funds had to come from somewhere because those dumpsters were paid for.
Right, so my question is, we can talk, go to any other district?
There should be a. No, 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 I'm saying if they place eight dumpsters in the city. If they put two in district three, two in district two, two in district one, have one up here and have one at the rec center, they would have to be accounted for if they were two hundred and fifty dollars a piece. So there should be a receipt somewhere.
Oh, yeah, every one of these disbursements would have.
Okay, so then, so that would be something that we would need to uncover.
Okay.
So that would, that would also help to guide us in understanding how as districts, this is a unique concept for a city so small to have districts, how we, the resources are provided to our constituents in these various areas, because there are things that happen. I don't know if it could be street sweeping. I don't know if it could be, who knows what it could be? But if there are expenditures for things that are allocated for city council, I don't know if it could have been the parade, it could have been, who knows what it was? But we can get to the bottom of that by asking that question.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, there's internal controls and every disbursement has backup for it.
So we're at seven o'clock. Yeah, one more question, Madam Protem. We're at seven o'clock.
I've been waiting a minute.
Okay, go right ahead.
Go ahead. Okay, so, Carl, um, so I'm looking at this budget here and you said that the revenue is on two.
One and two.
Is on one and two, right? Okay. So when I get to the end of one and two, uh, if it's revenue, explain to me why there is a proposed, a, a proposed mayor revenue of thirteen million, five hundred sixteen thousand and three hundred dollars. Why is it a proposed revenue?
Well, this entire budget is proposed. It's the mayor's proposed budget. That's just the name of this budget. It's mayor's proposed budget to the city council for their approval and adoption.
Okay, so, so, so Carl, in the future, if this is, if this is, is revenue, what, what should have been done is this, this one and two page should have been listed as what the city brought in, period, not a proposed, okay? Because it's like you're, it's like.
Remember, the proposed is just the name of the column.
I got you, I got you. But yeah, it, it's confusing. It makes it seem like, it makes it seem like.
There's a word missing, budget. If you just said mayor's proposed budget.
Right.
You saw that probably.
Right, right. It makes it seem like it's an expenditure.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, so Carl, again, so, so real quick, I'm, uh, because council, council protem has got a question. I want to save the time. So I noticed that everything, everything in this budget has gone up, not significantly, but just a little bit. Okay, each column is gone up a little bit. The, the, the mayor's proposed budget is a little bit higher than the previous year. Okay, so what I want to know is, have we taken our time, energy and effort to see where we can actually cut some costs? Or do you want council to make those cuts for you?
Again, the mayor's proposed budget, I explained how it came. It's basically last year's budget adjusted for fringe benefit increases.
I got that, Carl.
So there was no, there was no.
Okay, I, I got that, but my question is.
But your answer is no, there was no research in how to cut.
Okay, that is something that you need to do. That is something that you need to do. They're paying for it.
Get to Madam Protem, because he did say that the cost, the increase, he stated at the very beginning. This is an inflation adjusted, he said, he said it, it is an inflation adjusted tariff rich environment, the cost of doing business as a municipal nonprofit. He said it at the very beginning. He said this is a cost.
All I'm saying is, according to this budget, from what I'm looking at, from what I'm, from, from what I'm looking at, and we have great expenses here. And one of the biggest expenses, uh, I, I, I talked to Ms. Kathy Square earlier today and I asked her the question, the, the, the courts are bringing in millions of dollars in tickets and citations. Why are we paying for their, for their budget? Why is their budget on our backs?
So pause right there, Carl. That's gonna be for the next workshop. Madam Protem, did you have a question that Carl could take with him in his lunch?
Mention, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that twenty million is in cash. Where is that?
Sitting in the right, in a, sitting in a savings account, yes.
Okay, and I'm gonna stop right there, Carl. We have, those of you who had, um, Miss Manica, we sorry we didn't have you here at the beginning. The recording of the meeting is there that you have an opportunity to go back and hear from the audit. The audit presentation was nutrient rich. It was a really good presentation and I want to make sure that you get that. Carl, thank you so much for your time.
And I just want to say for the record, that the only thing that we have on our agenda for today is selling of properties and lots and stuff, so we could.
Madam Protem, we're still, we're, we're still in the workshop. We're still in the workshop. I sure am. I sure am. Thank you very much. And so ladies and gentlemen, we are.